Before we begin tonight, I'd like to recognize three residents of Newburyport who have recently passed away. Wayne Cole has passed away after many years serving in our public schools as a custodian. As someone who's worked in schools before, custodians are the most valuable people in the building. Natalie Brown of High Street, an activist, an outspoken advocate on the central waterfront, a woman who served for many years on the Maudesley State Park Association at the time when I served on that park association, has passed away, much to my regret personally. And third, Mr. Anthony Spadaro, who passed away several weeks ago, and we neglected to note him. He was the father of our personnel director, our human services, human resources director, excuse me, Tracy Maynard. Just a moment of silence to consider those three people, please. Thank you. And would you join in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to ask the board to call the roll.
Roll call for the meeting of June 25th. Councilor Agaman.
Here.
Councilor Junta.
Present.
Councilor Khan is absent. Council O'Brien.
Here.
Councilor Shan.
Present.
Councilor Tontar.
Present.
Councilor Vogel.
Present.
Councilor Z.
Present.
Councilor Devlin.
Here.
Councilor Earls.
Present.
Councilor Connel.
Present. Are there any late file items?
Mr. President, the councils will see on their desk, we have the following. We have Communication 59, which is a late file. It's the slow bike race to be held during Yankee Homecoming. We also have on the desk Communication 60, which is an A-frame for vintage chic. That's correct. That should have been in the packet. There is a Corrected Minutes Version 2, simply reflecting an additional roll call, I'm sorry, recess. And there's a corrected order for the Willabretta-Fry contract. The amendment was the older version. You have on your desk the latest version. So those four items.
Put a poll of the council. Motion to waive the rules and accept the late file items.
Second.
Moved in second. A discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we'll take those up in the order at the appropriate time. And it's time for public comment. And councillors, being a summer evening, if you wish to take off your jackets, please feel free. Geez, thanks. Jane Snow.
Good evening, Jane Snow, 9 Coffin Street. I'm not sure I'm right on this. Can I speak on a transfer?
Yes, you may. Definitely.
It's on the agenda.
It's on our agenda. Go ahead.
I just wanted to make sure it was in the right spot. Two things that concern me that I'll see on this is, one of them is Transfer 22, where it's $20,000 for school lunch. And I know over the last few years that you've gotten that down, but that still seems like a lot of money that's coming out of the general fund to pay for lunches that are not being paid for by parents. And I understand I never want a child to be hungry. I, you know, would like some more information on that because that does seem like it's a large sum of money to go unencumbered. And then the other one that I'm concerned about is, I know that you're going to be talking about the water and sewer rates. And if, I always say this wrong, that set fee that you have, the $18 and the $20 fee, one is water and one is sewer, so you end up having $38 on your bill. That's a usage charge before you even get charged for your water. Well, if it goes up to the recommended amount of $25 for each one, that's going to be a 31 percent increase. And for me, I'd like people to really consider how that affects because older people don't tend to use more water. And we're talking on one hand about, you know, passing legislation that will help people to stay in their home. And then on the flip side of it, for me, this will end up being, that's almost 50 percent of my bill if that goes up to that. So if you would just keep that in mind as you look at those two, I would be greatly appreciative. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And seeing as she was the only person who signed up to speak, we can move on to the mayor's presentation.
Thank you, Council President, members of the city council, members of the public and those at home watching. Safe routes to school. We met with MassDOT and their engineering consultant, TEC, and they presented 25 percent design at the public hearing last Thursday on the 14th. And the design plan will be posted shortly on the planning website. Overall, the feedback from the public was very, very positive. Why didn't we do this sooner? It was, you know, Council Tontar was also present at the meeting as well as Councilor Shan. And I think, again, the feedback was positive. There were some concerns raised about the beacons, the hock light, and what's called the RRFV beacons, which operate only when someone crosses the street. There's a picture there. We also talked about having, you know, the decorative lampposts as we have on downtown Newburyport, if they're going to be up on High Street. So we still have to work out some of that. Residents who have brick sidewalks want to keep the brick, and all the other sidewalks will be concrete. But overall, it's a very exciting project and was pleased to see the positive response from the public. Complete Streets, we've reviewed the proposals for the technical assistance consultant and have chosen TEC. It made a lot of sense to do that, given their strong relationship with MassDOT. They've done already a tremendous amount of assessment in the city as part of the Safe Routes to School. They have a good history with working with Complete Streets. And they will be working with the city to identify 15 to 20 priority projects. And then we will identify the ones we want to go forward as we apply for the 400,000 in construction funding grants. The Intermodal Facility Garage during excavation earlier this month, we uncovered a small site with some asbestos. DEP was notified and they've been working with the city on remediation. The asbestos must be removed from the site and we hope to mobilize later this week. And we're awaiting on final cost to this process. The project is being well managed, on time by GNR. And a really important and major component was the sign-off of the precast structures and shrafs. Bury, Vermont, our daily precast. Andy Port had to make the trip up there. And as you can see, he actually had to sign off on sample of the precasts to assure that they would be, you know, appropriate as they come in. Andy reported that he was very impressed with the factory and the quality of work and the overall process. The precast structures will begin delivery the week of July 16th with the big crane coming in that will be with approximately 12 oversized trucks per day for five weeks. I've attached the route. We've met on a couple times with the construction team, and we met internally today to look at the route. The trucks will be coming in from 495 to Route 110 and then coming along Bridge Road and coming down the south ramp, turn onto Merrimack Street and enter the site either through Merrimack or Titcomb Street. They anticipate it will be five to 10 minutes to unload, depending on how the structures fit in the fittings that are there. Could take up to an hour if there's any problems with having to make some adjustments. And then they will head out Titcomb Street, up Court, to High Street, come back down, winter, pick up the bridge, and out of town. We will have police details at every one of the important hot spots there. It's unfortunate that we talked about starting early. We talked about delaying during the week of Yankee Homecoming. And all of that translates, because this is a union contract, to hundreds of thousands in cost and change orders that we would have to do. So that is just not going to work. So we are going to, and because we needed all this information before we met with the abutters, we will try to meet with them next week. Many of them weren't available, so we pushed it out to the following week. It looks like it will be Thursday, the 12th, but I will confirm that with all of you. There is a letter that will go out to all of the abutters. There will be flyers that will be posted. We will be working with DPS and the police in terms of managing all of these trucks coming in and dropping off the precast. We anticipate that there could be like three trucks lined up on the ramp and then called in one at a time to drop and then go. So it's going to be complicated. It's going to be disruptive, but there is no other way that we can do this in order to get this garage built on, you know, in terms of the contract that we have currently. So we'll do everything we can to try and minimize the traffic backups and we'll make adjustments as we go. Please look at the maps attached to your updates if you have other suggestions, concerns. Please do not hesitate to reach back to my office. The Clipper City Rail Trail, the cleanup of the PCBs behind the wastewater treatment facility has been a very long and complicated process. We have finally received input from EPA, which was a big stumbling block on the removal process, but there continues to be concern about the washout at the river and to, what is the best approach to prevent further erosion? And this has been a massive, all along the waterfront, you must do to, wait a minute, we have an MVP grant for $122,000 to determine the best way to protect this area. So at this point, I'd like to do the most minimal amount of work possible. But the project is about complete. They're on the punch list and they do not want to continue until we know what we're going to be doing back there behind the wastewater treatment plant. So we will most likely, at this point, it looks like, move the rail trail in front of the wastewater treatment plant for the time being. And I know, I know, but there's not a lot we can do about that. And that's where we stand at this point. Give you more information about this as this becomes, you know, the change in route for the time being. With your bridge, we had a working group meeting with Amesbury and Salisbury on the 15th, the shared use path. The barrier is complete. It's a type-two fence. It's a tighter mesh. It's not, as you recall, the acrylic paraglass that we wanted because that wasn't crash-tested with the new standards. They're still working on final approval of one pier. They anticipate final alignment to happen during mid-August and the shared use path to open in September. And there'll be some formal ribbon cutting that you all will be invited to. In waiting an internal review, we've resolved a lot of the mitigation issues with Walsh-McCorr, and that translated to about $1.2 million. There's about $567,000 of work that hasn't been completed that we will do internally, including Spring Lane and the sidewalk on Spofford. So as soon as we have that internal review, should be able to sign off at the end of the week. And then we anticipate them cutting us a check for that $567,000. You have a list of status report on road work from DPS in terms of where things are. Please don't hesitate to reach back and ask questions. Tony is in this week. Wayne is on vacation, and then Tony's on vacation next week, just so you know, in terms of reaching out for contact. Technology and the Newburyport Public Schools. I sent you all a memo once this became evident that they were ready to put out to bid the approval in the capital plan for technology for the high school that the school committee approved, you approved, and as I said, it was ready to go out to bid. And then the standard protocol of what Don Skane does, who is here tonight to answer questions from IT Director of the School Department, as well as Susan Vaccaro Superintendent, at least for a few more days. They, he went and did an evaluation of Knockmullen and Breznerhand and determined that there were issues with some of the computers there. On the school building committee, which Councilor Junta was part of, we had established for each of the school projects a $250,000 account, Knockmullen, and one for Breznerhand specifically for technology replacement. Excuse me, those accounts have been set up. So all we're asking you to do is to tap into those accounts. And that comes to, oh, it's in the memo. I think it's about $80,000 for one and...
$5,360.
Yeah, thank you. So I included the backup because it wasn't in your packet, the memo that I sent you via email, just so that you would have that for further discussion later in your meeting. But as I said, I really encourage you to do this. They will get a much better price if they bundle all of the computer needs together and put these out to bid. By having to do two readings, they cannot wait until the 16th. That is, you know, they lose almost three weeks in terms of putting out this to bid. They'd like to put it out tomorrow, and it's ready to go. So I would appreciate if you would please approve the technology transfer this evening. Gayden Morrow Foundation, again, this wonderful foundation that was established to beautify Newburyport. They are particularly interested in parks and what they've been funding over the years. This year, their allocation to the city has increased 8 percent to $110,000. And we have our annual meeting scheduled for early September where we'll review projects. But, so thank you to the Gayden Morrow Foundation once again. I just wanted to recognize people who were honored at the Newburyport Education Foundation Awards on June 12th. Megan Ash, who served as the Chair of NEF for three years, did an amazing job, received the Ed Mullen Award, Blakely Green, the Cindy Johnson Volunteer Award, and Matter Communications, the Business Partner of the Year. I know there's a lot going on in terms of the parks. There's abutters issues to, you know, equipment and needs down at Atkinson and Pioneer. We have two ordinances that are in draft form, but I assure you that we're all committed to being able to work out these issues, resolve them with the abutters, find a home base for the Parks Department where they can store their equipment that won't be an eyesore to neighbors. And we had a really good productive meeting this morning, and we will continue meeting every couple weeks and also coordinate all of those approaches with the council and the neighborhood cities and streets with the Chair. MVP, the next step, as you will call, we had in April our meeting at the Senior Center where Horsey Witten was the facilitator. And we went through a whole series of identifying priorities in the city that we want to protect as our assets. And in order to reach the next step of moving towards becoming a certified MVP community, we have to do a listening session with the community about what those priorities are. That is scheduled for Thursday night at 6:30 upstairs, and I encourage the community as well as all city councillors to attend if you possibly can. And one thing I didn't put on the update is we had a meeting of the Waterfront Trust, NRA-City, last week. And right now, there's not a lot that's changed since my last update, but they are moving forward in a very coordinated way, working on the environmental cleanup. After that, there certainly are other issues that have to be addressed in terms of the final survey, conveyances, and the trust documents. But at this point, feel very encouraged about where we are in the process in terms of the environmental cleanup. And since we will not have a city council meeting until the 16th, I wish everyone a very happy Fourth of July.
Thank you, ma'am. Are there any questions of the mayor? Council Junta.
Just a quick one. What does the ACVP stand for?
Municipal Vulnerability Program.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
On the streets that are being done, on Low Street, it says not, has not yet organized a public meeting. And I'm wondering whether, and on High and Merrimack Street, it says the design hasn't been done yet. Are there going to be public meetings for High and Merrimack Street?
If the ward councillors feel the necessity to do so, be happy to do that as opposed to just posting the information or flyering the neighborhood, which is what we typically do, but would be more than happy to coordinate those meetings if the ward councillors feel the need to do so, or any councillor feels the need that they would like to schedule those meetings. We can work with DPS to do so in the next few weeks.
Thank you.
Or when they're ready.
Yep. Other questions or comments?
Thank you very much.
Mayor, you neglected one thing that I'd like to call attention to, and that was the visit of some celebrities recently. I thought that would have ended up in your presentation.
Well, I talked about them at our last meeting.
From Back to the Future, we were visited posthumously, I believe, by Doc Brown and Lorraine Daines. It was in the newspaper. I'm not, maybe you missed it. I don't know.
Well, I saw the picture today. It looked familiar.
Yeah, it did. It's a striking resemblance.
But congratulations to the team who brought this together to raise funds to save the tower. I think that's an important project at Atkinson Common, so thank you, Charlie.
Yeah, great fun. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Oh, I see one more thing.
Sure. Tonight is Susan Vaccaro's last evening meeting in five years. And I would like to just acknowledge the, I mean, I know, I think we said it at the last meeting, or you might have mentioned it, but, you know, it's been a wonderful five years of her leadership in the school district. And I would be remiss if I didn't take a moment just to acknowledge the great work that she's done in our school district, and I really appreciate that. And wish her all the best in her retirement.
Congratulations. Thank you. All right. Let's move on to the consent agenda.
Which consistency being of the approval of the Minutes Version 2? There are the following communications. Communication 53, which is a block party on Temple Street, August 2nd, to go to public safety. Likewise, Communication 54, block party on Dove Street, August 4th. There are two A-frames. Communication 55, A-frame for Sweet Haven Gallery to go to license and permits. And 56 is an A-frame for Salt and Grove to go to license and permits. Following, Communication 57 is a letter from Robert D. Morrow regarding the funding and the annual meeting. It has to be received and filed. Communication 58 is a letter regarding the Parks Department operations in Atkinson Common. That's to go to Neighborhood and City Services. There are no appointments, and that's the consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion.
I do just have one quick question about the Morrow letter. I do notice it's received and filed. Is that customary, or do we typically accept the gift as we do with others? What's, maybe somebody else's history is clear in their mind.
I don't think we've been consistent on that. Counselor Tontar?
I think this is just informing us that the money is there. Then they go through a process with the city to identify particular projects, then they come back and ask approval at that point. So this is just informing, kicking that process off.
Okay. Thank you, councillor. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, consent agenda is behind us. Let's start with the regular agenda. First, the mayor's update. Motion to receive and file. Second. Moved in second. A discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Transfer.
Transfer 21 has an emergency preamble submitted by Councilor Tontar for the reason that it's time-sensitive as the equipment must be put out to bid, ordered, and fully deployed to staff prior to the start of the school year.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Moved in second. A discussion? Counselor Tontar?
I'm just going to reiterate what the mayor just said. The school's tech team looked at this on June 11th and then submitted it. It's time-sensitive because if they don't finance it now and get it going, it won't be done by the time students return in the fall.
Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Transfer.
Transfer 21 has an emergency preamble submitted by Councilor Tontar for the reason that it's time-sensitive as the equipment must be put out to bid, ordered, and fully deployed to staff prior to the start of the school year.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Moved in second. A discussion? Counselor Tontar?
I'm just going to reiterate what the mayor just said. The school's tech team looked at this on June 11th and then submitted it. It's time-sensitive because if they don't finance it now and get it going, it won't be done by the time students return in the fall.
Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Transfer 21.
Transfer 21 related there, too, is $111,000, 140, coming out of the technology fund at Knockmullen. Transfer to Breznerhand School Technology Fund, $85,000, 360. And transfer to Technology Upgrades, a new account. I'm sorry, the $85,000 was from, so we have two froms. $111,000 and $85,000. Transfer to Technology Upgrades, $196,500.
What is the rule of the council? Motion to approve. Moved in second. Discussion? Counselor Tontar?
For particular information, I will defer to the superintendent, the Senate Building Committee. We did have a conversation about it. The, you know, the Building Committee set aside $254,000 for exactly this circumstance. My understanding is when they did the tech review, they discovered that the computers really should be replaced. So that's why we're getting this late proposal.
Counselor Z.
Just have a couple of questions. First one is, in the previous transfer we did, it looks like you were carrying about $385 per Chromebook, and in this one, you're carrying $500. Are they different Chromebooks, or is this just a budget number and that was kind of a more official number?
These are more official numbers. There's newer models that have been released, so the price has gone up a little bit. People noticed the desktop prices come down.
Yeah, I did notice that. It was $950 in the previous one and $6... Okay, so the second question is, are all the units that are being replaced, they were original when the school project was completed, so they're all about four years old?
Yep.
Okay. And then, are all of these computers, these are all for teachers, or this is mixed? Some are also for use by students?
There's no student machines in here. These are all staff machines. There are some support staff that will be getting upgraded computers.
Okay.
May I ask, when you speak, speak into the microphone. There are people at home who might be listening.
And then my last question is, so what's the overall plan for replenishing the tech fund?
Part of the plan is we're going to take the surface pro that are currently in good working order and sell them off to a refurbisher, which is going to bring money back in that we can replenish some of that tech fund.
Any idea how much, I mean, how many are good? It's hard to say.
It's hard to say until we get in front of every single one, and the price per unit will be based on the serial number of the surface pro, which revision they are. So the first generation obviously won't be worth as much as the second generation and the third generation. I'm estimating probably around $150 per unit.
Good. Thank you. Would the superintendent like to address this, or are you just up for questions?
No, I'm just...
All right. Other questions? Counselor Devlin?
Yes, so this is, the emergency is a result of the end-of-the-year assessment being done. We don't have enough time. Has any thought been given to next year? And I know that does not involve you, but it does involve you.
It does.
That we start the review earlier so that we don't have to do an emergency preamble.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Other questions or comments from the councillors? Thank you.
Thank you.
What is the rule of the council? Should we proceed?
We have motion.
We have motion on the floor. So all those in favor of this appropriation say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's done. And to the superintendent, if you have another item here you want to stick around for, you're welcome to stay, but if not...
I do. There's one more transfer.
Okay, that's, okay.
Thank you, though.
Just trying to get you home at a reasonable hour. Next up, we have the transfers?
We have an emergency preamble on Transfer 22.
Oh, yeah.
For the stated reason that a transfer of monies to fund the school lunch program requires action before the end of fiscal year, submitted by Councilor Tontar.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Moved in second and to approve. Discussion. Counselor Tontar?
You know, I don't know why we didn't get this before, so I'm going to defer to the Nancy.
What? Did you say that?
Someone approach the microphone and explain what this is for.
No second?
Why, this is a...
It has been seconded.
Someone approach the microphone and explain what this is for?
No second?
Why, this is a...
It has been seconded.
This is emergency preamble.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
He wants to discuss. Why is there an emergency?
Why does it need to be done?
We waited till the end of the year to see if we were gonna have to fund school lunch. We always wait until it starts running in the negative, and then we calculate how much money we need for the remainder of the year, and do the transfer. We had $20,000 budgeted in our budget, to go into school lunch as a contingency, and that is all needed. With that, the $15,000 that Chartwells will send us, because we don't, they have a break-even clause in their contract, so that will give us, hopefully enough, to make it through the end of the year. We're gonna be very, very close.
Thank you. Thank you. Further questions from the councilors, comments? Hearing none, we'll take a roll call on the emergency preamble.
Counselor Agaman?
Yes.
Counselor Junta?
Yes.
Counselor Bryan?
No.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Tantar?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Zee?
No.
Counselor Devlin?
Yes.
Counselor Earls?
Yes.
Counselor Connell?
Yes.
One absent, two no, eight yes. Motion passes.
All right. Transfer 22.
Transfer 22 is from school expenses, $20,000. Transfer, it says from, but it must mean to, school lunch, $20,000.
Motion to approve.
Moved and seconded. Discussion? Counselor Tantar?
So the council has a memorandum from the school department that first indicates the amounts of revenue lost in the transfers that have been necessary. So, in fiscal year 13, it was close to $100,000, then $60,000, fiscal year 15, $50,000, $40,000 in fiscal year 16, and $42,000 in fiscal year 17. So it has been decreasing. The $20,000 was put in the, in the school budget for fiscal year 18, for the circumstance that we would need it at the end of the year, and the requested transfer is to do that.
Questions, comments? Counselor Agaman?
Yeah, I'm gonna vote in favor of this, and I see the trend going down, which is great. I guess I'm just confused, because it was already budgeted. Why, why do we need to vote on it? Counselor Devlin?
The city council must approve all transfers between funds, and where this is going from general fund to the school lunch fund, it requires city council action.
Counselor Agaman?
Yeah, I'm not clear. It says the funds were budgeted in our school lunch contingency fund. Is there such a thing as a school lunch contingency fund? Are you saying that money's coming from the general fund?
The, the school lunch contingency is a line item within the school budget. So we're taking it out of the school budget and placing it into the school lunch special revenue fund.
So it's not coming from the general fund?
It's, it's, it is. It's coming from the school appropriation within the general fund.
It's just a line item, isn't it?
Further questions, comments? Counselor Junta?
I guess I'm looking for clarification, too. I wrote down $55,000, but I, maybe I have that wrong. Is, the $20,000 was budgeted, are we, are we putting an additional $20,000 in, and then Chartwells is covering their $15,000 to keep break even? Or do I have $20,000 twice?
Perhaps this is a question best answered, well, yeah, by the school committee, or someone from the school department? Excuse me.
We have $20,000 once. $20,000 is budgeted in our general fund. We have a line item in our general fund for school lunch contingency. That's being transferred to our school revolving, and the money from Chartwells is a clause in the contract that if any year we do not break even, they have to give us the first, first $15,000 back of the loss. So, that makes up the $35,000 that we'll need to balance the end of the year.
Counselor, does that answer your question?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it.
Other questions or comments from the councilors? Hearing none. All those in favor of this transfer, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
That's good. So we have a couple of late filed communications. We'll take up, communication 59 first.
Communication 59, the council will see on their desk, it's the slow bike race, which is part of the incoming. It's to be held on August 1st, from 4:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m.
Refer to public safety.
Second. I'm sorry, what was the motion? I couldn't hear.
Refer to public safety.
Public safety and seconded. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Public safety.
And we have communication 60.
Communication 60 is an A-frame signing, to be placed, I believe, at the edge of Tracy Place on Pleasant Street. It's for a store, front, farther up Tracy Place. It's called Vintage Chick. Want to refer to license permit?
Second. Moved and seconded to license and permits. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I'm, I'm sorry.
One present was, and who's the second on that? I'm sorry.
Counselor Tantar? So that has been referred to license and permits. We have nothing in second reading, so we'll move on to orders.
Orders.
44.
Reads as follows. City Council of the City of Newburyport hereby cancel the August 27, 2018 council meeting, due to the lighter schedule during the summer months. Submitted, Counselor Khan.
Motion to refer to rules? Motion to refer to rules. Is there discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is moved to rules. Order 45.
Order 45 is, the city council approves the following license contractor application for 2018 construction year for water sewer drain layer, roadway, sidewalk, electric, and communications work. BPB Construction Inc., Church Street, Kingston, New Hampshire. Submitted, Counselor Zee.
Motion tabled.
To table?
Second.
Yes, sir.
Motion is to table, and it has been seconded. Discussion? There's no discussion.
There's no discussion.
No discussion. That's number two tonight. All those in favor of tabling order 45, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Order 46.
Order 46 reads as follows. City Council hereby approves and operates the acceptance of a preservation restriction between the city, acting by and through its historic commission, and Tricia Whitcomb, for the property located at 496 Merrimack Street. And it gives the president, city clerk, authority to sign the subject preservation restriction as may be required, and to act on behalf of the city in accordance with Mass General Laws 184. Submitted, Counselor Tantar.
Motion to refer to planning and development.
Second. Moved and seconded to planning and development. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's in planning. There are no ordinances at this time in second reading. Committee items, budget and finance. It's a long list.
Motion to remove transfer 15.
Second. Moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's out.
Motion to approve as amended in committee.
Second. Motion to approve as amended in committee and seconded. Discussion? Counselor Tantar?
Yes, first, the amendment, the amendment, this was a transfer from solid waste, $35,000. Part of it, $15,000, was to go to the resiliency plan, technical assistance. We are holding that part in committee. We needed some further clarification, right? So, next meeting, that will come out. What we are bringing before you is the household hazardous waste of $20,000. This is a normal way of covering hazardous waste expenses.
Hearing none. All those in favor of this transfer, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Very well. Other items?
Motion to remove transfer 16.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's out.
Motion to approve.
Second. Moved and seconded. Is there discussion? Counselor Tantar?
Yes, this is, the, resulted from two facts. One is the use of bioxide and magnesium hydroxide have improved the odors in the process, and also reduced the amount of solid waste and sludge that needs to be removed. So, we don't, the sewer department doesn't need as much money to remove the solid waste, and more money for chemicals. So, the committee voted 3-0 to approve.
Counselor Agaman?
Yeah, just a quick question for staff. When the consultant, by the way, it has made a difference, these chemicals clearly, are help on smell.
Yes.
But the consultant told us a couple of years ago, he was concerned if we used too much chemical, that it would deteriorate the force main. Is that then accounted for?
Yes, it is. They, they've cut back on that.
Mr. Pena, will you approach the microphone, please?
Yeah, thanks. He's a little better. Yes, so as, as your question was asked, they have cut back on the chemicals for that reason.
They should not deteriorate the force main.
Not at all.
That's fine.
Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion to remove transfer 17.
Second. Moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion to approve.
Moved and seconded. Counselor Tantar?
It's a 3-0 vote, recommend to approve, and this is a normal means of financing the fueling of vehicles.
End of the year. Further discussion? All those in favor of this transfer, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. It's done. Counselor Tantar? Anything else?
Motion to remove transfer 18.
Second. Moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's out.
Motion to approve.
Second. Moved and seconded. Discussion?
Yes, this also is a 3-0 vote in committee. This is, you know, for fire overtime, which I know the chief prefers to refer to as coverage for...
Vacation time.
Yeah, whatever. Coverage.
Shift coverage.
Yeah. Shift coverage. Thank you. You'll see in the table that is presented to us, overtime as of the end of May was $340,854, and it's estimated to be, you know, to $350,000-some dollars by the end of the year. 3-0, we've voted to recommend. It's, this is in line with the overtime that has occurred over the past few years.
Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. Anything else?
Motion to remove transfer 19.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's out.
Motion to approve.
Second. Moved and seconded. Discussion? Counselor Tantar?
Once again, a 3-0 vote in committee. It's to transfer from three police department accounts to the purchase of a new administrative vehicle. The administrative vehicle is different than the online police vehicles. This, police department generally leases the online vehicles and beats them up, and then turns them over. The administrative vehicle, it's replacing, I think, a 2008 vehicle, so they try to get eight to 10 years out of it, so it makes more sense to purchase it. 3-0 vote again, and a committee to recommend approval.
Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. It's out.
Motion to approve.
Second. Moved and seconded. To approve. Counselor Tantar?
This was also a 3-0 vote in committee to recommend approval, and the HVAC is, air conditioning is not working in the fire, it's central station, Station 1, and it needs to be replaced.
Comments, questions from the councilors? Hearing none. All those in favor of transfer 20, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes.
Motion to remove order 41.
Second. Moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes.
Motion to remove order 41.
Second. Moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion to approve.
Second. Moved and seconded. Counselor Tantar?
Yes, we voted unanimously to, to accept the gift from the Newburyport 5-Cent Savings Bank, for $5,000 for new band uniforms.
Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's done. Education.
Isn't that done?
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. Go ahead. Counselor Tantar?
Motion to remove transfer 12.
Second. I see. Moved and seconded. All those in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Is there a second?
As amended. Motion to approve.
As amended.
Motion to approve as amended. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Counselor Tantar.
Yes, as you may recall, this was, there were multiple transfers. We approved all of them except for the transfer of three hundred seventy-five thousand of sewer retained earnings and a hundred thousand of water retained earnings. Both transfers from water and sewer designed to reduce the, intended to reduce the rate increase of water and sewer respectively. You will find a table that indicates the resultant rates. What, in committee, we came down to, I mean, there are a number of choices, but in committee we came down to two choices, right? First of all, the, we could just increase the rate and not attempt to use any stabilization to reduce the increase and not accept the transfer of one hundred and three hundred seventy-five thousand. Secondly, so that's one possibility. Secondly, we could, we could use the transfer to reduce the rate, right, but leave the service charge unchanged. The service charge is the, the charge that is the same for all customers regardless of use. The rate, of course, is dependent upon the rate. We could therefore either, you know, not change the service charge and change the rate alone. We could just change the service charge alone and not touch the rate, or we could do both. The majority of the committee voted to do both, right? And that's reflected in the last column of the sheet that was added to the, to the packet tonight. Now, you will also recall that the city has an ordinance, the city council passed an ordinance where we set the water and sewer rates, and you will see that in accordance with the majority on the committee, we are recommending the following, that the Newburyport City Council, upon recommendation of the Water and Sewer Commission, sets the fiscal year nineteen water and sewer rates and service charges as indicated in the last column of the document entitled fiscal year twenty nineteen Water Sewer Rate Recommendation. You know, again, this was, this was a tough one, I think, for all of us in committee. I think it was helped a little bit because there was only a four dollar and sixty cents difference between the two options we came down to. And on the one hand, as indicated in the public comments earlier, the service charge is shared by everyone. It's a set fee. And, and by increasing that, it's increased on anyone which, which hurts people who use less water, right? On the one hand, on the other hand, the service charge ideally should cover at least some of the fixed costs of the infrastructure. We, the water department has about one point eight million dollars in principal interest that owes annually on the infrastructure work that was done, and the water department has three million, do I have that right? Yeah, three million. So it's a total of close to, close to five million dollars annually. The service charges, of course, come nowhere near covering that. One of the concerns of the Water and Sewer Commissioners was that, you know, the rates, the amount of money that is brought in by the Water and Sewer Departments is dependent upon usage, and they were concerned because usage has been dropping, and so they wanted to shift a little more of the burden onto the service charge because they know that they will receive that. Two of us in the committee came down, following the Water and Sewer Commission recommendation. One member of the committee argued that the service charge should not be increased. The difference between the two, again, is four dollars and sixty cents, so.
Counselor Zede.
Yeah, so I'd like to speak as the one. I did oppose the, the rate increases for the service charges. It's just a simple question of equity. At the end of the day, it's pretty much a zero-sum game. The Water and Sewer Commission has already budgeted. We have already approved that budget, so essentially, we're not arguing about how much the total pile of money is going to be at the end of the year. We're basically arguing about where that money is going to come from. I would respectfully disagree with my Ward Four colleague about the four dollars and sixty cents. The average annual charge is interesting, and it's true that the differences between the two columns for average annual charge is fairly minute, but I suspect that there's a large standard deviation there, meaning that, again, the low water users, some of the seniors that we talked about here during forty-one C and a half and other things, are probably going to be heading towards, you know, having, if they don't already, having a service charge that outweighs potentially their water and sewer usage. In committee, I actually suggested a moderate solution or a middle-of-the-road solution where we could do the service charge on the sewer side, but not on the water side, I think justified by the amount of debt that sewer has compared to water. Try and split the difference a little bit. I certainly am sympathetic to the notion that more people are conserving, and that's a good thing, but it does show up at the end of the day. As you heard, it was two to one, so I didn't, didn't win the day on that argument, but I hope to earn your support today, so. To be clear, if you, if you increase the service charge for sewer at seven dollars per quarter, and if you increase the water, what's proposed here is five dollars per quarter. So that's almost forty-eight dollars a year, fifty bucks a year. Let's just round it up to be, to be even, and I think we've, we've raised parking fees. It's probably already well-known that, that the administration wants two and a half percent this year on the full levy limit that was already talked about during the budget cycle. So this argument of, well, it's only a few dollars, or we only do this per capita, or if we could just spend three dollars more, it does add up, and I think we have an opportunity here to do something reasonable, and I would support, you know, maybe more frequently reviewing some of these things, as we've talked about with other fees, so that we don't have these all-of-a-sudden hikes. And my final comment was another interesting thing we uncovered in committee, which is that we shouldn't expect to continue creating necessarily these surpluses. Sounds like we had a big balloon, if you will, that was created, but the year that comes that we don't create these surpluses, this whole thing's going to blow up and the rates are going to go up because there'll be no money to soften them. So I think, you know, a measured approach where we go up a reasonable amount if we have to is better than, you know, these kind of just like instant hits every so often. Thank you.
Counselor Augman.
Yeah, I sat in on, on this hearing and participated, and first, a fact is that some communities use a very different charge model. So Salisbury, for example, is the opposite of what we do, where the customer service charge is about five times higher than ours to cover all of the capital costs, and then the, the per unit cost for how much water you use is very low. So we're, we're way on the other end of the spectrum, and this modest shift recommended by the Water and Sewer Commission, you know, is already a compromise to get us closer to the middle of the road. Doesn't get us anywhere near the Salisbury model, but it gets us a little bit better than where we are. And I also, also heard about, yeah, we can't expect to keep having surpluses. The artificiality is in part due to better collection. There were some arrears that were, that are being burned off, and, you know, all the more reason, I think, to get our house in order, and we need to charge more. We have a massive capital investment that Newburyporters have put in, and, you know, users unfortunately to pay for that. It's, it's not free. So I hope you'll support the recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Shand.
When was the last time the service charge was changed?
Two thousand eight.
Counselor Tantar.
Ten years or so?
I think the service charge was sooner than that, but maybe, we heard in committee five to six years, was it?
Twelve.
Two thousand twelve. Somewhat, six years. Right. And, and before that, was it, it was higher, right? It was...
They need to come up.
Sorry, could someone from DPS approach the microphone? We have people watching, I'm sure they're interested. Thank you.
The sewer went to this customer service charge in two thousand twelve. Prior to that, they had a different format. There was a seventy dollar every six month customer service charge that accounted for your first, I'm sorry?
Yeah, eat the mic.
Sorry. The sewer customer service charge used to be seventy dollars every six months for, and that included your first one thousand cubic feet of water. Now it's recommended to go to fifty dollars, twenty-five dollars per quarter for a total of fifty, but it doesn't include any water as your consumption. It's a straightly as flat fee.
Twenty-five dollars?
Per quarter.
Hundred dollars? Per year.
A hundred dollars per year.
Right.
And no free water.
That's this proposal here?
No, that was the...
Yeah.
That was the old format.
Counterintuitive.
Replaced. That was done by a voter no, too.
Further questions or comments from the councilors? Thank you.
Thank you.
Hearing none. I'm going to move to, because I think we're going to need a roll call on this. Let's take a roll call on this one, please.
It's a motion to approve the three hundred and fifty, three hundred and seventy-five thousand for sewer and one hundred thousand for water, correct?
And it's one order now, yeah.
And the rates. Counselor Augman.
Yes.
Counselor Jumta.
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien.
No.
Counselor Shand.
Yes.
Counselor Tantar.
Yes.
Counselor Vogel.
Yes.
Counselor Zede.
No.
Counselor Devlin.
No.
Counselor Earls.
Yes.
Counselor Connell.
Yes.
Needing a simple majority, Director of Finance, motion passes.
Thank you. Counselor Tantar, anything else?
Motion to remove order forty.
Second. Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's out.
A motion to approve.
Second. Motion to approve. Moved and seconded. And it's seconded. Any discussion? Counselor Tantar. I thought you were going to say amended, that's why.
Oh, yeah, it actually is amended, I'm sorry. Amended. Motion, I withdraw my motion to approve. Motion to approve as amended.
And seconded as amended. Counselor Conner.
Yes. So this is the Willabretta contract. Willabretta is the incinerator in North Andover that, that essentially burns our non-recyclables, right? And it's a five-year contract. It's, it's actually an extension of the current contract. And the, I'll just, first of all, the increases for fiscal year nineteen is about two percent, two percent fiscal year twenty. Fiscal year twenty-one, it's three point seven one percent. Fiscal year twenty-two, three point one six percent, and fiscal year twenty-three, three point zero six percent. The, we, you know, we pay by the amount that we use, so if people put less out on the street, then we pay less, right? So it's, it's a rate. Let me speak to the amendment. The amendment is a result of changes in the contract from the first time that we saw that. You had in your original packet the amendment as it, as we received originally, and tonight you received the changes. Let me, let me just indicate to you the changes, there are no changes in the rate. The, if you, if you look at the contract, the first six items were unchanged. The first five, six were unchanged. The Appendix A, which is the mercury, was added in, that becomes seven. Appendix C is deleted, that's eight. Appendix D, which is the cleanup, was added, it was kept in, is added in. Appendix E for shops was, shops program was added in, is ten. Appendix F was the same as the old number, was in number eight, it's now eleven. That deletes the education fund, and nine now becomes twelve. So actually relatively minor changes from what we originally received, but changes are there. Thank you.
Counselor Zede.
So I guess my question is, is we received communication from the mayor just at the beginning of this meter, meeting, on your desks, which basically says the council doesn't do solid waste contracts. So... Yep. It's in, it's in, it's in section eight dash forty-five. The Board of Health may make contracts and issue licenses for the collection, removal, and disposal of garbage, dead animals, decayed and decaying matter, and so forth. All contracts must be approved by the mayor. So removal and disposal of garbage. So my question is, you got, you know, who wants it? Because we, you know, we spent three hours last week on Mellow. If it's not our jurisdiction, then so be it. We'd like to move on from it because the contract was troublesome as it was presented.
Does someone from the administration like to address that question?
Yeah, we just recently received this from KMP Law. We appreciate the help that the council put into this, and although the final contract is under the purview of the Board of Health and the mayor, we welcome the input from the city council.
Counselor Augman.
What are we doing?
I had the opportunity to ask the mayor just this question right before we convened at seven thirty. So, because the opinion from the city solicitor didn't answer all the questions, because there's, I believe there's a statute which says contracts that last more than three years have to go to the city council. So that would mean we do have jurisdiction, and the mayor agreed. So I think the easiest thing would be just to go ahead and act on this one. That was my understanding, is we do have jurisdiction. If it were less than three years, no, but it isn't, so we don't need to fight about it. Let's just hold on.
Further discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Counselor Tantar, anything else?
That's it. Thank you.
Okay, now, education. Nothing to report. General government, nothing to report. License and permits.
Just to notice that the ordinance, zero two three, it is in committee, it wasn't late, our commission late into last week, definitely a revised waterway, so that will still be in committee, so we'll be scheduling that post-game.
Thank you, Counselor. Ed Ripley, City Service.
Nothing coming up, but we do have meetings tonight of the Newburyport Services and attended by two regents.
At Pine Hill Park, who had an interest in the acts in common, and also there's an interest in Violet Mall, so we're, we're discussing the ordinance that's been done and redone excellently by Counselor Augman. Appreciate the work he, he's doing for the committee, but we didn't make a final decision, so we will be having another meeting.
Very well. Thank you, Counselor. Planning and Development. Counselor Augman.
Nothing's coming out, but just to update, the list is getting long. So the zoning advisory committee met on Friday. We are buttoning up revised use tables, so we expect to bring those to the council in July, so that's coming up soon. We've rewritten the entire use tables to modernize them and rationalize them. It's been fifty years, it's time. Then also, I'll be bringing back a ban on use variances at the same time, because that was the deal. Fix the use table, you don't need use variances anymore. I think if, we haven't had anything on the brown school in about three months, so I've asked the administration if we could bring that back to life and get an update, see where we are. So that's coming up. The marijuana amendments, you think you'll hear, that's probably going to be council of the whole, that'll be discussed by the president momentarily, but we got to get rolling on that. Want to stay well ahead of any possible deadline for a special election, so we can discuss zoning. And let's see, those are the hot items to look out for. Thank you.
Counselor Earls.
Mr. President, I respectfully request that ordinance zero two four, which has been referred to planning and development, be referred to council as a whole.
Committee of the whole.
Committee of the whole, thank you.
Committee of the whole. Point of order, would it, you think you'd take it out of committee and then refer it back? I'm going to ask the clerk to rule on this from a parliamentary standpoint.
I think probably it's clean if the Counselor Earls made a motion to remove and refer it back to both planning and development and committee of the whole.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. Counselor Devlin.
Which one was this again?
Ordinance, the last one on the list, zero two four.
Oh, two four. Zoning amendment on marijuana retail use.
Yeah, not order twenty-four.
How was it?
All those in favor of recommitting this to the committee of the whole, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Counselor. Anything else from planning and development? Counselor Augman, did you want to address the meetings of the NRA and Central Waterfront?
I'm sorry, it slipped my mind. The president asked me, so we have the third of three public meetings jointly with the mayor's office, planning and development, I'm sorry, Office of Planning and Development, Newburyport Redevelopment Authority, Waterfront Trust, everybody. So the mayor touched on it in her report. The NRA does have capable legal counsel who's working on how grant deeds could go out, and the grant deeds appear to be going to the parties generally that the city council recommended last May. The one exception would be instead of splitting the water portion, the submerged lands halfway, you know, halfway down the middle, the proposal from the NRA currently is to give it jointly to the Waterfront Trust and the city, so we would have co-dominion. And so that's, that's in the mix. We still don't really have resolution on amending the Waterfront Trust documents, which was something that the council asked for, so that's not in there currently. And we don't have an agreement, we don't have ink to paper that I've seen on how the money is going to be shared. Remember where we ended up last May was that there was a formula, you know, the smaller the parking lots got and the bigger the park got, the more revenue from parking went to the Waterfront Trust in order to incentivize everybody. So that's still a limbo. Other councilors attended the meeting, so I'm sure I've left something out, and please pipe up if there are other issues, but this is by no means done. It was, things seem to be moving along, but the critical path right now is activities' use limitations, which have to be recorded on the soil because it's contaminated. So you have the NRA working with its lawyers to do all that paperwork, and then you have the Waterfront Trust lawyer, Grace Connolly, who has commissioned their own review of the environmental, because they don't want to take title unless they know they're free of liability. That's all I have, the others are not.
Counselor Tantar.
Yeah, the only thing I would add is they did discuss a timeline, which was a little bit of an eye-opener for me, and I think optimistically, a year and a half before it was going to, they were going to come to a conclusion, was my sense of it. I said, it's my term, optimistically. They said a year and a half.
Counselor Augman.
Yeah, no, thanks for reminding me. Actually, two different timelines. So the timeline, they do not have to go through an RFP process, there's no procurement in order to give title to the city. So the pieces of land that are going to go to the city, that is more like a thirty-day time period once they clear up the AUL. So for example, patio area behind the firehouse and the piece of land to the west of the custom house and then the water. But then the other ones, yeah, that are going to go solely to the Waterfront Trust, it was more like eighteen months.
You know, again, just for informational purposes, my understanding, and this was new to me because it pays close attention to others, but the, the NRA is going to design the park, and they had an estimate of four hundred thousand dollars to complete that, that plus the other things they had to do. And then at the end, the, the Waterfront Trust and the city would receive it, but there is, you know, there's no funds yet for the capital improvements. And they cannot, apparently they can't give their funds away to the Waterfront Trust.
Thank you. Any other questions or discussion on this matter? Thank you, Counselor Augman. Public safety.
Motion to remove Communication forty-nine from six eleven, two thousand eighteen.
Forty-nine. Motion to remove forty-nine from committee. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's out.
Motion to approve.
Second. Moved and seconded. Discussion. Counselor Devlin.
Yes, I had a conversation with Jamie Shabo. No, I know the guy, Shabo. And this is the tenth time they've done it, they've had no complaints. Time is six to ten P.M. I've actually been to this one, too, so they've got all their sign-offs, they've contacted everybody on the streets affected, they all come anyway, and there's no entertainment...
everybody on the streets affected, they all come anyway, and there's no entertainment. It came out with a recommendation to approve two to nothing.
What's the end time? What's that? The end time on that? Thank you. Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Anything else, Counselor?
Yeah, motion to remove Communication 50 from June 11, 2018.
Moved in second. Remove 50 from committee. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion to approve.
Second. Moved in seconded. Counselor Devlin?
Yes, I talked to Michael Kent from the Fire Department. This is the same thing that they've done for many, many, many years, and they do it at Market Basket, they do it down at Market Square in the street, and they bring a small engine down there so the kids can play on it and then get on it. All the money goes to the Muscular Dystrophy Association. It was recommended to, for approval, two to nothing.
Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Anything else, Counselor?
Yeah, motion to remove Communication 51 from June 11, 2018, the High Street Mile.
Seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
It's out? Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Moved in seconded. Counselor Devlin?
Yes, I talked to Mike McCormick. This is their 47th year running this. They have all their sign-offs, they have insurance, they expect participants in 500 to 600, which is what it's always been. You know, it starts at Three Roads, acting if in common, comes down to the high school. They do have an entertainment, you know, some entertainment, a loudspeaker. They have never had any complaints. I communicated with them about, you know, being too loud when they're setting up and playing the music, and they totally understood, and he's been very responsive over the years. All the money goes to local charities, like last year was New Riverport Conservancy, Accington Commons, and some others, and they'll choose similar ones this year.
Yeah, great event.
It came out, recommended approval, two to nothing.
Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion to remove Communication 52 from 6/11/18, coast to the Cure Bike Ride.
Moved in seconded, to remove from committee. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion to remove. I mean, approve.
Moved in second by Counselor Jenta. Discussion. Keep removing. Counselor Devlin?
Yes, I talked to Diana LaHive today. She called me back. This is their eighth time doing this. This is ones that we really like. Starts and ends someplace else, it's Gloucester's problem. They expect 50 participants, there's four different race distances, and we're in one of them. When I made the joke, I said the only thing you should probably do better is to have them stop and shop a little bit and then leave. She said, you know, we don't do that, but we do try to use local businesses in all of the communities that we pass through, and she said, so they've contracted with New Riverport Brewing Company to supply the beer at the end of the race festivities. So she's at least thinking that way. They have all their sign-offs, there's insurance, and it's, you know, it starts at, you know, like 6:00 in the morning, but they won't be here until, you know, mid-morning to midday. It came, it recommended approval is two to nothing.
Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion to remove 42. Let's do ordinance number, or order number 42 from 6/11/2018.
Moved in seconded. All those in favor of removing this from committee, say aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion to approve? Is there a second? I didn't hear which one it was. Counselor Zied? Go ahead, Counselor.
So Section 13, 181A lists public parking lots that you have to pay between 8:00 and 6:00 p.m. Monday through Saturday, and noon to 6:00 on Sundays, and this makes the dramatic addition of adding a seventh parking lot, Hales Court, or a small lot, it looks like Prince Place to me, but it's different. It was recommended to come out of committee, two to nothing.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
None.
And we have a motion to remove ordinance, boy, that's tricky, ordinance number 42 from, oh, no, I already did that one. Ordinance number 12 from 3/26/2018.
Second. Moved in seconded. All those in favor of removing this from committee, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's out?
Motion to approve. Do I have to do as amended?
That's what it is for us.
As amended in committee.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded. Would the clerk give us some detail on this, please?
Be happy to. It states, it's a change to what was submitted as ordinance 12, which read as follows. "Any personally identifiable data collected in the course of parking regulation enforcement by, via any means that does not result in any violation of warnings shall be discarded within 24 hours of collection." And the amendment in committee added the following. "Nothing contained herein shall prevent the parking clerk from collection, collecting and retaining information of a general nature without personal, personal identifiable information to be used for parking reports and studies." Period. So initially, this was submitted to delete data within 24 hours except for violations of warnings, and now this expands it to keep generic data. Fair statement, I think.
Thank you. Counselor Zied?
Yeah, of course, the amendment's friendly, that was always the intent, was to allow for aggregate, we spent many nights here wishing we had more data on parking, so that wasn't the intent at all. Obviously, I hope you'll support this, and actually, at the sort of somewhat request of the parking clerk, as a member of the Parking Advisory Committee, I just wanted to remind everybody of the changes, in case anybody's getting questions, or maybe at home or watching. So July 1 is kind of the big day. Lots of changes in the parking system, not the least of which, probably the one people are wondering about the most, is no more stickers. There's, you're not getting another sticker ever again. If you like the one you have, you can keep it as a souvenir. Replacing that will be the license plate-based program, which was the, which was the reason behind this ordinance in the first place. So you will receive a letter, I'm told, in near, in the very near term, directing you to renew your permit online, or if you, if you don't want to do that, to come into the clerk, but you basically will be buying a permit for your license plate, and the enforcement will be done by license plate. So that's one important change for residents who are worried about their sticker. Same thing applies for employee stickers as well. Second big change is if you are a paying customer at the lots, and not a sticker holder, or not what will become a license plate permit holder, rates are changing in the lots, and how you interact with the kiosks are changing. So the notable changes in the rates are Green Street, Prince Place, and Hales Court are going to $1.50 currently, $1.00 per hour. And then when you go to the kiosk, rather than what was called pay and display, meaning you pay and you receive a sticker, you stick on your window, you now key in your license plate. So try and get that license plate in your head before you walk to it. I've remarked a number of people this week having to run back to their cars to get their license plate. And then the final few things are, the resident passes will be $15 per year, seniors $5, employees $1.60 or $1.60 per year, 40 per quarter, and finally, you know, pay or get a permit so you don't get the new hire fine of $25.
And the hours of...
Oh, yes, of course. The new hours, although as just mentioned here, the Hales Court will be, become Monday through Saturday, 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., changing currently, which ends at 6:00, will go to 8:00. Sundays, correct me if I'm wrong, remain unchanged, noon to 6:00 p.m. Did I get all of them?
You did.
I did. Okay. So hopefully that helps, maybe treat that as a frequently asked question thing, hopefully it answers some. Thank you.
Good, Counselor. Counselor Devlin?
So it came out two to nothing, recommending approval.
Oh, that.
It's personally, just to make sure to correct the clerk, it's personally with an LY at the end, identifiable information, which is a specific privacy term in today's online world. The clerk gave testimony, that spoke to the vendor, and you can do it. And, you know, so for instance, we have an MGL Chapter 93H which identifies personal, personally identifiable information that, like a city or town, or a lawyer has to protect, or a bank has to protect, social security numbers, full names, dates of birth, the documents with things like that on it, you're not allowed to give those out unredacted in a Freedom of Information Act request. There's a national institute of standards and technology that, you know, we go by in the United States, and that's, they list out some of the things, like your facial recognition, you know, if that technology is there, that can be something that's personally identifiable information. So there is a standard by which the clerk can go by, and he felt comfortable with the language that we chose. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion?
Counselor... Did you say the rate, the hours are going to be 8 o'clock on Saturday?
Monday through Saturday, 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Sunday...
I thought what came out of committee was, on Hales Court, I heard 8 to 6.
That's today, but July 1, everything goes until 8:00, Monday through Saturday. And 12 to 6 on Sunday is the...
Hearing none. All those in favor?
Of a roll call.
Yes, this will be a roll call.
Roll call on ordinance 12 as amended. Counselor Augman?
Yes.
Counselor Jenta?
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien?
Yes.
Counselor Shannon?
Yes.
Counselor Tantar?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Zied?
Yes.
Counselor Devlin?
Yes.
Counselor Earls?
Yes.
Counselor Connell?
Yes.
Anything else, Counselor?
No.
Oh, no.
Thank you. Public Utilities?
No, of course not.
Nothing tonight from Public Utilities. Rules Committee?
Good of the order.
Counselor Jenta?
Counselor Khan wanted me to remind folks who are watching at home, that last, last week, we had a community forum on retail sales of marijuana. We had a speaker from the Cannabis Control Commission, David Lakeman, and we also had a speaker from the Marijuana Public Project, Jim Borganesi, if I have that right, and various department heads fielded questions from the public. This will be broadcasted on poor media, I'm not sure if it's on there yet, because I don't have cable. So, but I hope it's on there soon, and everybody can tune in and watch. Thank you.
Counselor Jenta modestly omitted himself from that agenda, but he made a terrific summary of where we had gotten, how we'd gotten to where we are today. Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Vogel?
If you don't have cable, you can watch it on YouTube.
Anything else for the good of the order? Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Moved in second to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We're done.
I hope she called you with all that information. I hope Counselor Khan called you with all that information. Didn't put it in the memo form. Putting it in the memo form is illegal.